I'll make do. I'll make do. I'll find a way.
I don't know. I might be.
Mary Ellen, though, is really, really upset.
I am. I might have to just go home. Oh, your phone? My luck, I'd break it.
All right. Well, it is 6:00 PM, Monday, October the 10th, 2022, and I will call this special joint meeting of the Lewisville City Council and Lewisville Planning and Zoning Commission to order the council side of that, and we do have a quorum.
And I also have 6:00 PM. I will call to order the planning and zoning part of this meeting, and we also have a quorum.
All right. So tonight, we have the pleasure of handling a workshop presentation, discussion of our proposed Unified Development Code. In 2019, the city engaged the team of Kimley Horn Strategic Community Solutions and City-Centric Planning to rewrite and combine all development ordinances into a new Unified Development Code. The code has been drafted to achieve the goals set by City Council and incorporate input from the public and the development community. The presentation will serve as a refresher and preparation for the public hearings for adoption scheduled for November 1st, 2022, and November 7th, 2022. Prior to the public hearings, there will be an open house to present the new Unified Development Code to the public on October 25th, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the Lewisville Grand Theater, 100 North Charles Street. We do have providing tonight's presentation Mr. Richard Lutke, our Planning Director, Michelle Berry, our Planning Manager, Karen Walz, Strategic Community Solutions, Mark Bowers, Kimley Horn, and Phyllis Gerald, City-Centric Planning. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, and Chairwoman Mixa and members of the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome to our joint meeting tonight. Really feel like this is a celebration. It's almost really a coming-out party for our new Unified Development Code. In fact, this morning, as we were preparing for the meeting tonight, you know, I told the team that I was just absolutely giddy that we've gotten to this point. It has been a very long process, a very detailed process. It's had lots of obstacles, but, you know, as they always say, you know, good things come to those who wait, and we have waited for this, and we are finally here. So tonight, like I said, I'm just going to kind of kick things off and talk a little bit about the flow of the presentation tonight. So I'm going to kind of start off with kind of the background or the history, really talking about some of our earlier ordinances. You know, our original zoning ordinance was adopted in 1953. It only had 19 pages, three zoning districts. And then, you know, that evolved in 1971. I think we really kind of hit the big time at that point, adopted a brand-new zoning ordinance, about 74 pages long, and had 12 zoning districts. And so today, our current zoning district is well over, right at 35 districts. So it has grown. We've done a lot. We put a lot of Band-Aids on it since 1971. The zoning ordinance that we're working on, you know, had, that was its origin in 1971. So there's been many amendments, but long overdue on this overhaul. Likewise, the General Development Ordinance, also known as the Land Development Regulations, the earliest one that I could find was a 1977 subdivision ordinance. It was only 36 pages, and it covered all the aspects of, you know, of infrastructure and plating and all that kind of fun stuff. But I think as the city grew, they realized that that was inadequate, and so in 1989 is when the GDO was written. And I believe Nika Reinike, back then she was, Nika Zogodri, was fresh out of college, and she had, that was, she was a project manager for that project. And these codes have served us very, very well, but like I said, it was time to move forward and incorporate new ways of doing things, and more, most importantly, though, incorporate all of the feedback that was representative of all the planning that we have done. Lewisville has done most of its planning over the last 20 years, and I think one reason the city has been so successful on so many fronts is because of those planning efforts, especially the 2025. I know we're going to be referencing the 2025 and the multiple plans that we have adopted over the years quite a bit tonight. In fact, you may have noticed on the agenda at the end, we do have a proclamation proclaiming today as a 10-minute walk-to-a-park day, kind of coincides with the actual date, 10:10. So we really feel like that's a part of the celebration. That whole effort really came out of our planning process and was kind of amplified over these past few years, you know, working on this code overhaul. And now, you know, like I said, we're running full steam ahead on that and making a lot of progress. So again, we really want to celebrate that, and that proclamation will be formally read at the end of this meeting. Another thing that I really wanted to kind of show you, this big stack here is kind of the four major elements that we operate in right now, the GDO, General Development Ordinance, the zoning ordinance, the I-35E overlay district, and the Old Town Development Ordinance. Altogether, these four binders, this big stack here, well over 600 pages. And now, the new Unified Development Code has been streamlined, put on a diet, and it's just right at 400 pages. But it also includes a, really, a great deal of illustrations and charts and things to really make it more useful, more helpful to the users. And with that, like I said, I do want to recognize everyone that's been involved in this huge, monumental effort, particularly my staff, my planning staff, my small but mighty staff, especially our Planning Manager, Michelle Berry. She has put in absolutely hundreds of hours. We've lost count of how many times she's read things over and over and over. She's put a great, great deal of attention and time into it, and we really owe her a lot. She's just really our right, my right hand, and we cannot have done it without her. She's done an excellent job. And she will be, I'll be handing it off to her here shortly, but I really wanted to recognize her in coordinating all the various departments and their reviews, and she's going to go into more detail about the various committees. I think the most impressive thing about this is all the input that has gone into this document along the way, and I think that's what has made it such a good document that really reflects the vision of the city, what we want to be, really parallel to all of the information found in the 2025 plan. I also want to recognize our consultant team, just an absolute dream team to work with. We almost feel like we're family now. We've been in the trenches now for so long. I'll start off with Mark Bowers with Kimley Horn, and we have Karen Walz with Strategic Community Solutions, and Phyllis Gerald with City-Centric Planning. So all of them will be following me and covering various parts of the code. And I think with that, I think I will go ahead and turn it over to Michelle, and she'll keep moving forward with an overview of the code. I think she'll also be talking about, you know, why we're updating our ordinances, a little bit about the engagement process and the stakeholder groups, and then the feedback process, which, like I said, all went together to really make this successful.
Yes, thank you, Richard. So just starting off with a project overview, why are we updating our ordinances? So the primary reason we needed to update our ordinance was to make sure that they're reflecting the goals that we've adopted in our 2025 plan, the 2025 plan update, and all of our various small-area plans that we've adopted since 2014. So to facilitate that implementation and to achieve those goals, we needed to make sure that our development ordinances lined up with them. We also knew that we're seeing new forms of development that are creative and responding to today's economic conditions. We know that a lot of those new forms of development are related to redevelopment and the fact that our community is 94% built out, and most of what we're seeing today is actually redevelopment projects, which are more challenging on a number of levels, and we needed to have a code that would better address those conditions. We also wanted to make our ordinances more user-friendly. We wanted to update the format to be more consistent with today's modern approaches, where we're looking at screens a little bit more and looking at paper copies a little bit less. We wanted to have everything all in one place so people could find it easily without having to flip back and forth between various ordinances and chapters. We wanted to make sure that our development processes were business-friendly and also responding to requirements and state laws. We wanted to eliminate conflicts between codes. We'd had a lot of various updates over the years, so we wanted to look at this a little bit more thoroughly and make sure that everything worked with each other, so we weren't having as many conflicts and having to sort out those issues during the development process on specific projects. We also wanted to incorporate modern best practices in development, so making sure that our ordinances do reflect what is the latest and greatest and does reflect new information, new trends, new research, to make sure the development in Lewisville meets our vision and is the best possible. We really wanted to make sure that we engage the community in this process, and we did that in a number of ways. Our overall approach was to make sure that the process was transparent, appropriate, and flexible. And what we mean by that is transparent is we wanted to make the information available for those that wanted it. We know that not everybody is going to be interested in the development ordinances for the city of Lewisville, but if you are, we wanted you to be able to find them and know where they were. We wanted to make sure that we're engaging the appropriate people throughout the process, and we wanted to provide flexible options for how people got involved, and that really got thrown for a loop during the COVID process when we had to switch everything to virtual, but we tried to be very, very flexible then. And we also wanted to make sure that we were getting input that was actually valuable and could inform our decisions. And so we used online social media and e-newsletter techniques. We did community open houses to get general input from the public. We did those in person in 2019 and virtually in 2020. We had focus groups initially, and we had stakeholder groups at key points. And I want to just touch base a little bit about the stakeholder groups on the next slide. And then, we obviously involved this group, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council of Lewisville. We've had several joint work sessions together and updates. And we will have final action for adoption by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, hopefully next month and early November. So our code review committee was one of our key stakeholder groups. This was the staff that's primarily involved in the Development Review Committee. So that's our engineering staff, our building services staff, fire, public services, parks. This group met many times throughout this process, and we went through the code in detail, line by line in some instances, to make sure that it was reflecting what people wanted. And so this group really did provide technical input and knowledge based on their expertise areas, but we didn't want it just to be staff. So we also had a technical advisory roundtable. And so this was our development community and our private partners. These were your engineers, your landscape architects, architects, and developers that have worked in Lewisville and were familiar with our codes and ordinances, knew the pitfalls of them today, and had opinions on how they could work better. And so we met with this group and got feedback from them to help inform our process and make sure that we stay development-friendly from an industry perspective. So we did have a nice loop in terms of the feedback process, where we had the draft from our consultant team that went to the code review committee, then to the technical advisory roundtable for feedback. Then we would have a joint P&amp;Z session to discuss the major topics and get general direction. That would go back to the technical advisory roundtable so that they knew how council was feeling on things, and then the consultants would revise the ordinances. We would do a community open house to get input from the public and make sure that we're moving in the general direction that the public wanted us to move before going back to the code review committee and making sure we understood it and it worked internally for us, and then preparing the final ordinances. We did that twice, once for the zoning section and once for the subdivision and land development standards. And now we're here at, about to be at the Planning and Zoning and City Council action. So I'll turn it over now to our consultant team to kind of go over the major changes and the benefits that we're expecting. But hopefully, this will be one of the last steps in the process, followed by our open house that we're having on October the 25th.
Thank you, Michelle. Yes, it's very exciting to be here at this point, and I'm so pleased that the ordinance, as it has gone through the process that Michelle was just describing, really does accomplish so many of the things that we talked about at the beginning of the 2025 process, and really takes into account all of the input that Michelle was just describing. So a couple of the general features in each of the slides here, I want to talk about a different aspect of the ordinance, but you'll see in each case the council direction. You all guided us throughout this process in terms of what you wanted to see, how you wanted to address certain concerns. And then you can see on the slide the expected benefits that we hope to and expect to receive from the process, from the revised code. So in general, as Michelle mentioned, bringing things up to date, adding flexibility, providing consistency and predictability, the things that the development community really wants to see and that residents of Lewisville need and want to see. So this simplifies things dramatically. It makes it much easier for people to understand what Lewisville expects, what's going to work, what's not going to work, what the process is going to be, so much more certainty for everybody involved. Also, as Michelle mentioned, this is reflecting the direction that you all established through the Lewisville 2025 plan. In terms of the ordinance structure, what's different here is that you agreed that you wanted to have a unified development code, not separate, different ordinances, but to have it consolidated and therefore completely integrated and consistent. As Michelle mentioned, this makes it much easier to find things for everybody involved, whether it's the applicant, whether it's the neighbors, the staff, you as the decision-makers, all of those things, by putting it all together in one place, making sure that all the definitions are the same. Something as simple as that really makes a difference in terms of how these things will work. And part of the feedback we had early on from the development community was that we really needed to have a lot more charts and a lot more graphs that would explain how it works, so it's easier to follow. And so all of those kinds of direction you will see in this, in the final document, the draft that you have before you now. In terms of decision-making process, this is something we discussed at several of the joint workshops that we had throughout the process about how many things that come to council now are really technical decisions, are really decisions where the variances are almost always approved. And so the question was, let's streamline that process. Let's put the professional authority with the professional staff. Let's make sure that council and P&amp;Z have the proper oversight. And so the result of that, we expect, is going to be that development processing time will be much shorter, that the things that have been coming to you all will not have to be taking up time on your agenda, because your professional team will have been able to address them. And obviously, there's still an appeal process if someone has a concern, but we think this should improve everybody's decision-making process and streamline and make better use of everyone's time who's involved. The last point that I want to make in terms of this overview is about infill and redevelopment. And Michelle mentioned this a minute ago, that Lewisville is almost entirely developed, but you are seeing all kinds of development activity. Just walk down the street tonight, and you'll see new development going on. What's happening here is a sign of the success of your policies, that you are seeing people wanting to revitalize, wanting to fill in properties, wanting to be part of the reinvestment and the new Lewisville that is growing and changing now. That's the future here. You all have embraced that, and by making sure that the development codes don't stand in the way of what you're trying to accomplish, it makes it much easier to deal with those issues. It makes it much easier to deal with the challenging parcels. Redevelopment parcels are not nearly as simple as just a big, open, greenfield property. So by changing and updating the code, we expect that the benefit is going to be further support for the redevelopment activity that's happening and is so exciting already in Lewisville, as well as in the course of, in the process of that, making it easier for a developer to come in, know where that project is going to be supported, reducing the time and the upfront costs and the uncertainty that they face with that. So all of those things give you sort of the big picture of what we feel like are the benefits of the new Unified Development Code. They are directly following from the council's direction throughout the process, and we think are going to really make a difference in the continuing success that you have in making sure Lewisville continues to thrive. Michelle mentioned all of the public input that we've had throughout the process, and that has been extensive, as she noted in the flow chart she was showing you. When I went back and looked, the last time we had one of these joint meetings was in the spring of 2020, back when we held it as a virtual meeting, and we had a further discussion with city council in July of that year on a couple of the key issues that had come up. So after that time, there's one piece of that public input that we have not had a chance to share with you. I think the staff probably has kept you up to date on it, but we wanted to make sure that you and for the folks listening to know about the virtual open house and what happened with the results of that, since that was, since the time that we last had a joint workshop like this. Because of COVID, we could not do a community open house as we did for the first round of the process here that we did in 2019. At that time, we had both online and in person. In 2020, we did all of it virtually and designed a survey that would combine those two together. It was available, as you can see on the slide, for about a month in the fall of 2020. We had about 45 participants or so. That's a similar number to those that we had between the in-person and onlines earlier on. What you can see from the chart there is that most of the people who provided feedback are Lewisville residents or Lewisville business people who have a stake in the city and who were interested to know how this was going to work, how it was going to impact them. So I think that's a very positive aspect of that. We focused the survey on eight major topics. These topics came out of the discussions at that joint workshop and that city council direction, and they were really kind of the last points where we needed feedback on how we thought we should address these important concerns about Lewisville's future character, things like better biking and walking, issues about how the streets and paving and utilities work, all of the things that you see on the list here. And we structured the online survey so that people could decide which thing they wanted to review. If you wanted to see about the layout of the new subdivisions, you could go to that section. If you weren't so concerned about that, but you really wanted to know about parks and open space, you could skip down and go to that session, section. So we gave people a lot of flexibility. Now, as you might imagine, some of the topics in a Unified Development Code are a little dry and not so much the thing that people want to sit at their computer in the evening and read long, long paragraphs of complicated-sounding stuff. So what we did in designing the survey was we included a lot of graphics, like the one you see here. We tried to be really clear about, here's what's going to change, and then we asked people, what do you think about those ideas? So we tried to make it very accessible to a layperson, as well as, obviously, for the professionals who are involved in the development process, but we wanted to try to make sure everybody could find out about what was going to happen, what would be different. The summary, I'm just going to give you some real highlights of the comments that we heard. Overall, the feedback was very positive. It was very supportive of the proposed changes that you were considering, that we were sharing with people during that survey. A couple of those that I've listed here, lots of support for increasing walkability throughout the city, connecting to the parks, making it easier for people to get out and walk and not drive all the time. The additional flexibility that was proposed also gained a lot of really positive comment throughout the comments that we received. There were several topics, I would say, where there's, people responded on both sides of the issue, and I've listed a couple of those here. The Muse Street, which is a new type of design for Lewisville and is not a really common one. Some people said, yes, I'm so glad to see this. I love this idea. And other people said, I don't think that sounds very good. I'm not sure what that means. I'm not sure exactly how that will work. So we heard, we did hear some kind of conflicting or different views from different people. Similarly, about the changes to the proposals on front-entry garages, and that's obviously a topic that you hear about quite a bit. The last point I would say is that there were a number of comments where the comment was such that you could see what the need will be for education about this new code once it goes into effect. A number of the comments, for instance, about the changes to the alley cross-sections, there weren't so much objections as there were questions about, how is this going to work? And how am I going to be, how will, you know, how will the vehicles be able to get in and out? And how is this going to happen? So it was clear that some of these changes are going to need an educational rollout as part of the process to implement and to put this into effect. But overall, I would say that the comments were very supportive of the direction, and that was really one of the last, as I mentioned, the last kinds of public comment that we heard since the time that you gave us the last direction. We put together a report on those comments in October of 2020, just about two years ago, amazingly enough. And as the consultants and the staff team worked on reviewing, we took all of these things into account. We went ahead and made those changes. So the document that you are seeing today reflects the input that we received at that open house, that virtual open house, as well as the comments in all of the earlier segments of the process. So with that, I think I wanted to give you that update so you know about that last part of the public engagement. And I'm going to turn the mic over to Phyllis. She's going to highlight the major changes, and I'll tell you in advance that Phyllis will go through sections of the ordinance, and at the end of each of those, I will facilitate any questions and discussion that you might have at that point.
Well, good evening. It's a real pleasure to be here tonight. I want to add to my appreciation to staff and Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for all of the time and work that y'all spent in this process, because it really helped to inform the final regulations that we ended up with. And I'm really glad to see this all in one notebook instead of spread across my dining table like it was for a year. So, but as Karen noted, there are four subparts to the new ordinance, and we're going to go through each one of those and stop at the end for questions that you might have. And I'm going to try to hit the high points, but if you do have more detailed questions, we'll try to address those as well. So the first subpart is the administration, and this is for pretty much all of the legal aspects of the ordinance. It also includes definitions. Those are all in one place now. Development and zoning procedures. So this is what an applicant has to do when they turn in an application for a zoning case or site plan, how those documents move through the process, who has authority to do what, what does the Planning and Zoning Commission do, what does the city council do, what does staff do in this process. And then relief procedures, this is the variances and how people request those and who has authority to approve those. And then finally, this section addresses nonconformities. And we usually think about nonconforming uses and nonconforming buildings, but we've also now addressed nonconforming site improvements and lots, because as Lewisville continues to develop and redevelop, and older properties are coming, can't always come into compliance. So we've added a bit to our addressing the nonconformities. One of the things that we did was add a two-step site plan process, and we have added a concept plan, which is a less detailed plan, and this would apply to certain projects, and it allows a developer to work out problems in advance on the concept plan before they've actually spent a lot of time and money developing the full-blown engineering site plan and all of the, you know, plans that go along with that. The planning director does have the authority to waive concept plans under certain circumstances. So not every developer will have to go through this process, but we think overall will be helpful to them. Karen talked a bit about restructuring the variance process and in terms of delegating to the planning director and city engineer, a lot of the professional requests that come up in terms of where their expertise is needed, also involving the boards and commissions, Planning and Zoning Commission, zoning board of adjustment, where items require some discretion, and then also retain city council's involvement, and provide an appeal option for each process. Now, a lot of this is modeled on the I-35 overlay district and the way that variances are structured in that document. The Board of Adjustment will still hear variances and special exceptions, and this could be variances to height, building setbacks, lot coverage, those type of things, reconstruction of nonconforming structures. They already have this authority for much of these items. An administrative modification would be something that staff could approve, again, the planning director, city engineer. This could be reducing parking, driveway spacing, utility locations. And then we also have alternative standards, and these are the items that would come to the Planning and Zoning Commission or city council. It depends on the degree of what's being requested. In terms of primarily landscaping, the Planning and Zoning Commission could have authority to approve some alternative standards up to a certain percentage. Above that, city council would step in, depending on what the applicant is requesting. So that's a brief overview of Subpart 1, and see if y'all have any questions, and Karen will moderate.
Try to see. I don't know if this is on or not. Good? Okay. So, Phyllis- So Phyllis has summarized some of the key parts of the changes in terms of the administrative aspects, this first sub-part. Are there questions or comments or concerns that any of y'all have on anything that she's talked about, or any other administrative sort of questions that y'all might have?
I have a question.
Yes.
So looking at the approval authority, has been a projection about, I guess we're talking to Mike, about how many, we get this all the time, right? So they want to step back 50 feet to 25. What does that take off the City Council, put over to the group?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Phyllis, let me repeat the question, just to make sure you can hear. The council member is asking about, what changes here are going to take off the workload from the City Council in terms of things like the variances? At what point, or kind of how much of that do you think that this is going to kind of relieve them of focusing on?
Kind of put another way, and I'm sorry, I'll speak into the mic here. Put another way, on any given council meeting, there's one to five of these kind of, you know, somebody wants to plant three trees instead of four, or it's a chain link fence instead of a wall fence, or how much of this moves off of council and into the other groups?
Well, that was one of the things, when we first started working on the ordinance, that struck us, is how many variances the council does approve. And I think the proposed changes will eliminate a lot of those. If it's something like a water line size, or a, you know, tree placement, then those would be staff decisions. And the Planning and Zoning Commission then would have some authority to approve those things as well. So I think you'll see a lot of decrease in the number of variances that ultimately make it to the City Council's agenda.
Is that answer?
I was hoping for like 50%. 30%. And if you can't get that, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't know, staff might know now how many variances you're seeing on a given agenda.
It seems to me that early on, we did a calculation when we were first talking about this, and there was a calculation of how many variances had come to council, and how many of those were really professional or administrative. And I want to say it was over 50%, I would say, quite a bit, but Michelle probably has the details.
Yeah. I would expect over 50%, well over 50% hopefully, to be relieved of having to go to City Council so we can streamline those things.
Thank you, Phyllis. There will be no audit after the fact, just thank you.
I have a related question to that. As variances are approved and come in, is there any provision for keeping track of the variances? And if they, if there are a huge number of the same type, the same thing, that the code can then be modified so that those no longer have to be variances?
You know, one of the things that we talked about as we discussed making these changes was that council wanted to see a list of the variances and for staff to keep track of those. So you would be able to see things like that. What's, are there consistent requests? Because that's usually a good sign you need to look at your ordinance requirements.
Which is why we did this to begin with.
Exactly, and you probably recall that discussion we had early on where we looked at that and we looked at how many of those, there were several items which this addresses now, that were coming up over and over and over, and it was not a very, it was a minor item, but everybody had to go through that whole extra process.
My question is this, it's great, it sounds like, I actually went through some of, because I was looking for something specific, so it is easy to get through, but are we thinking about as we send this out and it's public facing and we're dealing with developers, are we getting feedback from them once it goes live? Are we having something that's prepared so we can do process improvement as we go along to see if we see anything in the first six months or one year that needs to be tweaked?
Yeah, we'll definitely monitor, and any feedback we get from the development community, you know, we will use that kind of as a benchmark, and probably with almost all ordinances, about six months to one year, you usually do kind of a minor revision, just to, you know, the final tweaks is what we like to call it, to rectify those little things that, you know, didn't work as we had originally thought.
And so the tweaking won't be a major deal like this ordeal was for you guys?
Correct.
Thanks.
And I think, you know, Michelle mentioned that we had that technical review committee throughout this process that included the development community, and the feedback we've gotten all along has been really positive from them, and I think, we were talking this morning, I think Michelle is going to be reaching out to them after tonight's workshop so that they have a chance to take a look at it, to come to the open house if they want to and provide further comment before it gets adopted as well.
So Mayor and Council, I'll add, and P&amp;Z members, the entire document, the entire process, our legal department, Liz Plaster's office with Lauren Crawford worked feverishly for months on end to review this document, as well as the mechanics of what we're talking about on the structure of how this works with staff authorizations, P&amp;Z, ZBOA, council. So hats off to legal staff on their input throughout this process as well, to make sure, especially, again, the administrative stuff that we're talking about now is, keeps the city in good hands and flows appropriately. So just to add that.
Any comments before we move on? Questions?
Okay, great. Okay, we'll move on to Sub-
And folks, I know some of the folks here on both boards are new or haven't had this deep a dive, so please feel like you can ask questions. I would hate for you to walk away with this, with a question in your head that you did not ask, that's what this is for.
Okay, we'll move on to Subpart 2, which includes zoning and development regulations. And this is where you're going to find the regulations for the official zoning map, what actually constitutes that, individual zoning districts, the list of special use permits and planned development districts. Overlay districts will all be in one place now in this ordinance, and then uses and supplemental use regulations. So this is a pretty lengthy part of the ordinance, and includes a lot of important information just about your basic zoning districts. So what we tried to do with the updates to these sections is put a lot of, do a lot of reformatting to put information into chart form. Right now, if you go to your zoning districts, you kind of read through all this text about the setbacks and the height, and all of that now is in a table format, which we think will be a lot easier for folks to read and to use. We did add lists of the special use permits and the planned development districts, so if you look at the zoning map and it shows that your property is zoned a PD, you can quickly reference where to find that ordinance when it was approved and what the, then you can then go to what the requirements might be for development in that PD district. All three current overlay districts are now in the same place, and it's structured so that you can add more, and I anticipate the city will add overlay districts as you continue to grow. And then allowed uses are all in a single chart, and I think this is going to be a lot easier for folks to find, rather than having to go to each individual district, they can compare the, in the use charts and see very clearly what's allowed and what's Just spend a minute on the use charts, it's going to show where a use is permitted either by right, by special use permit, or it's not permitted. And then there's a column that if there are special use requirements for a particular development, then it's going to reference a section of the ordinance that includes those special requirements. So a developer looking at this would know automatically whether his use was allowed or not, and then if there are some special requirements that go along above and beyond just the basic zoning district requirements. And this is a sample of the use charts, and you just kind of see how we've reformatted that, put all the information into one page, one chart. As we went through this, we also added some additional residential provisions. We talked about these quite a bit in our joint meetings, in terms of allowing backyard cottages. This is a way to add to your housing stock, to improve affordability in the city. These are allowed by right with certain requirements in the larger, single-family zoning districts. Also, we had a lot of discussion about allowing duplexes, again, another way to add more housing to your inventory, to provide more affordable housing, let someone maybe own a duplex, they live in one side, they rent out the other. We finally landed on allowing those by right in 7.5, 6, and R5 zoning districts. And then we also are addressing the demand for smaller houses, and we're seeing this trend now. We decreased the minimum house size to 1,000 square feet for small lots, single-family and townhouse zoning districts, but we kept the 1,700 square foot minimum for the larger single-family zoning districts. I think that's a good, happy medium there in terms of recognizing that not everyone wants a 3,000 square foot house, that lots are getting smaller and houses are getting smaller as well. And questions on this sub-part?
Now, these zoning and development regulations are really one of the key substantive aspects of the ordinance, of the new development code. And those of you who have been on council or P&amp;Z for a while will recall a lot of those discussions we had on some of the points like what Phyllis was just talking about. Do you have questions now? Do you have comments or feedback for us?
I love it when a plan comes together.
And I like that thumbs up from the council member. Okay?
We'll move on then to Subpart 3. This section has the design and development standards, so your parking, your landscaping, tree preservation, screening requirements, fencing, and lighting. And I'll go through these briefly. All-street parking and loading, we have essentially reduced required parking and standardized it across the board for most uses. So for example, for retail, the parking requirement now is one space every 300 square feet. The current ordinance, it kind of scales up, it's 1 to 100 if it's less than 2,500 square feet, and then it goes all the way up to one space every 200 square feet. We've done the same thing for office development as well. So what you'll, if you look in the parking chart, you'll see 1 to 300 is pretty much the basic requirement for a lot of retail and office uses. You know, we know every city is overparked, and, you know, we're all guilty of saying, well, what does Denton do on, you know, let's just mimic their ordinance. So, you know, we, over time, I think, you know, we have tended to overpark most uses. There are going to be some exceptions to that, restaurants, still going to require a lot of parking for those, but I think you'll find this is going to make it a lot easier for developers to reuse some of the large parking lots that you have now, that they can now come in, subdivide, and build new buildings on what was once required parking. We've added allowance to, for compact cars, up to 10% of the required parking could be compact cars, and I know, this is Texas, we have a lot of pickup trucks, but you know-
I was going to say, what is a compact car in Texas? An F-150?
A Ford Ranger, right?
Yeah.
But there are smaller cars out there, and this, again, will save pavement, stormwater, drainage impacts, that type of thing. The new ordinance also allows building additions up to a certain size and changes in use before you have to provide additional parking. So this recognizes reuse of buildings, and you might have a new use moves in, and they, you know, up to a certain size, and they don't have to provide any additional parking. We think this will help spur reuse of a lot of buildings as they do turn over for new tenants. We have provided a disincentive for people to build too much parking, and that is if you go over 110% of the required parking, then you have to use permial pavement or provide additional landscaping. So there are some disincentives now for doing the wide, you know, sea of parking that you might find in some older shopping centers. And then finally, in recognizing the push to make Louisville more green, there is a requirement now to add the infrastructure for electric vehicle charging stations. This would apply to any parking lot that's over 100 spaces, and 5% of the spaces have to be, I guess, pre-wired so that that infrastructure can be added at some point in the future if it's not immediately.
Is that pre-wired, or does it just have to have the conduit?
It is, it has to have the conduit and the capacity at the-
At the breaker?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. That one was gone somewhere.
It's been, it's been a while.
It's been a while, yes, sir. Moving on to landscaping requirements, we've made several changes to landscaping requirements. We've increased the landscape strip width for non-residential development, and I want to note too that, you know, a couple of years ago, you did amend your landscaping requirements and coupled those with facade material requirements. So a developer has to do a wider landscape edge unless they meet certain facade requirements. So that's still in the ordinance. For new plantings, we're only going to allow native and adapted drought-tolerant species to be planted. We've also provided more flexibility in clustering and placement of trees, so that they don't have to be just regimented, one every 40 feet, they can be clustered and still meet the landscape requirements. I think that this is helpful, especially where you have right-of-way and landscaped edges that are not consistent. There's a limitation in the new ordinance of 50% on turf areas. Remaining required landscaped areas would have to be gravel, rock, mulch, some other type of material that doesn't require all of the water usage that turf does. We've reduced the number of required trees for new homes. Right now, a new house that's on a large lot, 12,000 square feet or larger, has to provide three trees. We've reduced that to two, and then when you get into the smaller lots, as we're now seeing townhouses, we've reduced that to one tree, and in some cases, that could be an ornamental tree. Once you get down 10 feet or less for your front yard, there's just not room for a tree, and so we've provided some options to address that. And then finally, for landscaping, we've added irrigation system requirements. Drip and bubblers are preferred instead of sprayheads, and sprayheads could only be used for turf areas under the new ordinance requirements. Again, focusing on trying to reduce water usage in the city. Tree preservation requirements have also been updated, and I think y'all actually had some more recent amendments to this, to this section of the ordinance. But the new ordinance clarifies the permits needed to remove trees. So essentially, if you want to remove a tree in Louisville, you have to come in and get a permit for that. You can do that either through the site plan plating process as a property develops, you can do that where no development is proposed, but you would still have to come in, let's say you wanted to clear a property, but you weren't planning to build on it, you still have to get a permit for that. And then also a permit for underbrush removal. Sometimes it's hard to tell what's trees and what's underbrush, so we are beefing up the permit requirements. In your current ordinance, you had to protect trees that are 5 inches diameter at breast height, and we are increasing that to 8 inches, which is fairly standard for a number of cities, but we are reducing the exemptions that are in the current ordinance. And all tree species would be protected except for what we, well, we call them trash trees, but in some cases, you do have good bode arcs and cottonwoods, but these would not be protected under the new ordinance. For new single-family subdivision, multifamily, and commercial development, all protected trees, 8 inches diameter at breast height must be preserved or mitigated. There are tree credits that are provided for preserving trees, those are now going to be based on the diameter at breast height rather than- Those are now going to be based on the diameter breast height rather than per tree is in the current ordinance. And then the developer has to pay a fee if protected trees are removed and can't be replaced on the property. We've also added some incentives for tree preservation. You could do smaller, single-family lots. Average lot size has to still meet the base zoning district if you do that, but you could have a variety of, of lot sizes to preserve trees. Reduce parking for commercial developments up to 20%, and reduce building setbacks, again, trying to encourage more tree preservation. And then since this is a special area in terms of post-oaks and blackjack oaks, there are special credits for preserving those, even if they're smaller than eight inches diameter breast height. We've substantially beefed up exterior lighting requirements in the ordinance, and they're now all in one section. We've established minimum and maximum light levels, so you can't have light overspill across your property line, but you do have to provide a minimum level of lighting for your property. For pedestrian paths and walks, we've required a, or added a requirement for lighting for those. A set of maximum height on parking lot light fixtures, because to date, you know, you see a really wide variety in what developers choose, and sometimes they're lighting up a lot of property that, you know, not exactly on, on their property. And then as part of the engineering site plan, the developer would have to turn in a photometric plan so that staff can make sure that their proposed lighting does meet the standards. And we'll see if you have any questions on this section.
Yeah, I think when you listen to Phyllis's description of some of these standards, you really see how this carries out the ideas of the 2025 plan, and how it really supports the sustainability, the kinds of neighborhood things, and the kinds of business developments. We've tried to make it so that people who are doing what you're looking for, may, it makes it much easier for them. For people who are not interested in that, it creates, it makes it clear what you're expecting. So what questions and comments do you all have on the, the development standards section?
I'll just throw a comment in here. One thing that I think is, is really great is that we are looking at the environmental impacts and really creating some standards. I think being able to kind of give people a, a box to play in, and, and if they want to exceed or change that, then that's okay, we can have that conversation, but I know as, as they are today, they're a little vague, and, and there's a lot of opportunity for maybe misinterpretation. This lines up much more with, with what we're trying to do in 2025, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right, Mayor, and that's one of the areas where we really did get a lot of discussion with the development community and with the public as we went through the process. And then bringing that back to the staff team, and the staff members who are here didn't all have the same idea either, as you might imagine, as to what was the right balance, and I think we had a, a lot of debate, a lot of really productive discussion that's led to this, which in my mind is a really good balance, that achieves what you're after but doesn't make requirements that are unrealistic. Other questions, other comments?
I think we're ready to move.
Okay.
Okay, well, last but not least, subpart four. This includes the land development regulations, subdivision regulations, assurance for completion and maintenance of improvements, and then your park development regulations, park fee procedures, park land dedication requirements that are, that are in your current ordinance. And, you know, subdivision ordinances don't get, I don't think they get, usually get the respect they deserve, because they, they really do determine a lot about how, you know, what the city looks like in terms of your streets and your sidewalks and, and how things function. And so it, it's always interesting to work on subdivision regulations and see how we can use those to, again, carry out the goals of Lewisville 2025 and making the, the city greener. We'll just spend a minute on some of these changes that we have made to the ordinance. We're trying to implement the city's complete streets policy where appropriate. We are increasing minimum sidewalk widths to five feet for residential streets, six feet for other streets, and where you have these extra areas that require extra attention through your park master plan and trail plan, they would be eight feet wide sidewalks required in those areas. Then we're also requiring street trees of appropriate species for certain types of streets, and these would be primarily residential streets where you have small lots, you have reduced setbacks, there's really not room to put a tree in the front yards of houses, so developers would have an option to do either street bulbouts or a planting strip where you would have trees in, in a row along the streets. Couple of other major changes that we've made in the ordinance. We've decreased the maximum lot length of a block from 1,800 square, or 1,800 feet, which is pretty long, down to 800 feet. If you go over 800 feet, then you have to provide pedestrian pass-throughs. Again, trying to make the city more pedestrian-friendly, make it easier for people to walk through their neighborhoods, you know, to travel in that manner. Another change that we have made is to allow cul-de-sacs only as an alternative standard, so the developer couldn't come in just with all cul-de-sacs in his proposed development. They would have to get approval to do that, and again, there would need to be a pedestrian pass-through at the end of the cul-de-sac to connect streets, to connect neighborhoods, and improve the walkability of these new neighborhoods. Terms of street and subdivision design standards, some of the things that you'll see that are different in the ordinance would be, we've created a new muse street design standard, and Karen mentioned it earlier, that there was a little bit of, of uncertainty, I guess, in the community about these, but a muse street is essentially a wider alley that, that serves usually townhouses where they might front on open space. So you could have houses that would face open space, there's no street in the front, but there would be this rear muse street. The standard that we've adopted is 24 feet in width, 30 feet of right-of-way, and, you know, they would be, they would essentially serve as rear alleys for these small lot subdivisions. And this was an item that we talked about a lot in our meetings, is to allow front-entry lots, not as a variance, but to allow those except for lots front on public or private open space. Now, there are some standards for front-entry driveways. The ordinance essentially says if you're front-entry, your garage has to be to the side or the rear, or if it is in the front, there's some design standards that you have to meet, and that would be that the garage can't stick out more than five feet in front of the house, and the garage doors have to have some type of design that, that's above just your standard metal garage door. So those are some new provisions in the ordinance. Utility and drainage standards that have been changed, and all of these are designed to make it easier to develop in, in Lewisville, and, and these are things that we heard both from your engineering staff as, as well as developers, of things that would make, make it easier, you know, to, you know, to do development, to not have to go for a variance, and to really align a lot of these things with, with what other cities do. But the city engineer now is going to have flexibility to approve alternative stormwater designs that would promote best management practices in natural drainage systems, and really trying to make sure that major creeks stay in the natural state as they are developed, that you don't channelize those, reroute them, you know, put them into, to box culverts, that type of thing, really trying to encourage natural drainage patterns and to maintain those. One of the, the changes is to increase utility width easements from 15 feet to 20 feet, but eliminate the building setbacks from the easement that are in your current ordinance. Today, you're, you have 15-foot-wide easement, but you had to set the building back then away from that, so we've eliminated those, but widened the easement to still provide room for utilities to be installed and then to, for equipment to get in and work if they have to be repaired or replaced. Another change is to allow public utility lines to be placed under pavement. Now, this is a substantial change for the city, and a property owner would, would be responsible then for replacement of pavement if repairs are necessary. So the property owner does get, you know, have some responsibility there. And finally, allow performance bonds as well as cash escrow for infrastructure surety, and this is fairly common to allow a choice there of either escrow or a bond for, for that. Those are the major changes for that subpart, and again, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
And you can see, again, there's a lot of discussion that went on with the development community, with the staff in the various departments, with the public, to make sure, you know, what the changes are that will make things work more smoothly, but still address everybody's concerns about the various technical issues. So what questions or what comments do you have on any of these sections?
So I, I didn't see anything in there about building materials, and I'm assuming this is because of the House bill that passed, 2439 or whatever that was. Is there just no relief in sight if somebody wants to drop a shipping container on a lot, there's nothing we can do about that? No, just open that question up.
The products, the products would have to be a listed exterior finish in the building code, but yes, it's pretty much wide open, with the exception of historic districts or quarters like I-35, but, you know, that's... I will say that, that a lot of the changes you see on this last slide provide a, a very good flexible component to developers, both residentially and commercially, without increasing the risk to the city. Most of you know, I've been here a while, I was here when letters of credit were issued to ensure off-site and onsite public improvements while the building was built. Off-site developers went bankrupt, the letter of credit was no good, hence the cash escrow was the, was the big buzzword in the late 80s and 90s. The performance bond is a good surety for the city. It does allow flexibility to allow the developer simultaneous construction, everything comes due at the end at the CO, with the exception of fire protection has to be in, but this is a, a really good allowance in the code to allow this. Utility lines and, under pavement, that's the developer's option. That language will be on the plat and/or the engineering site plan, that way the owner knows through different, through, through the years that it's a city water line or a sewer line, but it's, if they elect to put it under their parking lot, we're going to repair that line, but it's up to that, that owner to go back and replace that pavement. Always an arguing part through the decades about you didn't put my concrete back right the way it was, so this gives that developer the option to do it, but it has staked in the game to that developer, hence away from the rest of the taxpayers that, you know, don't have to get in that argument and their time and money and, and effort spent arguing about that. So this is a good win. The 15 to 20, we increased the widths but put a five-foot setback on pressurized and non-pressurized, 10 and 5 on pressurized and non, it was confusing. So we're just having, upping our minimum easement width. Of course, it could be wider if it's a deeper utility, but this should make it more straightforward and easier for everyone to understand.
And council member, the legislation that you bring up is one, one of the things that changed during the time we were in the middle of this process, so you can imagine that that was why, you know, all of us on the team, all of the staff, were working really hard to try to make sure what was, you know, what was going to work or not work under those changes, and that's why it's been especially valuable to have the legal team involved all the way through to make sure that even as things were changing, that we could try to address this to best achieve your objectives, but obviously still stay within that changing legislation.
I, I really meant to open up with, this looks great. I didn't mean to just come right in with the other thing, but this looked, this is very impressive work, so I appreciate that. I think a lot of us just have stuff concerned, and that's, that's a state thing, not a local thing.
Exactly.
Is, is there anything that we can do to incentivize builders to, to use certain materials? I realize if there's an HOA, historic district, certain overlays, we have some control over there, but is there anything that we can put in the code that incentivizes builders to, to do things that are compliant and, and keeping with the aesthetics of a particular neighborhood?
Well, I think Phyllis talked about a few of the incentives as far as some of the more kind of green design aspects of things, and so there are some incentives like that that are already included at this point.
Yes, a, a wider landscape strip is, is required and, and more landscaping unless the developer meets the facade standards.
So you get a bonus, basically, if you are, you're following our, our previous rules on materials and design, then you get a bonus to, you know, allow a narrower buffer for landscaping. Otherwise, you'll have a much wider one.
Okay.
Okay. Other comments, other questions?
And of course, if they ask for any variance at all, then we have an opportunity to, to come back and, and ask. I did hear at TML that there was maybe some murmuring about adjusting, I doubt it'll be revoked, but there's definitely some murmuring about adjusting the legislation at the state level to give us back some of what we lost, but again, that's, it's, it's the ledge, who knows?
Yeah, I know, I know there have, having been involved with the Planning Association's advocacy efforts, I know that there have been some real unintended consequences of that legislation, so something, maybe something will adjust things, we'll see.
And Patrick, you'll be happy to know that the concrete replacement, that third bullet point, that's what's going to get rid of about 50% of the council variances, that one alone.
Awesome.
The driveway concrete?
Other questions and other comments?
I think we're good.
Okay, very good. In that case, I think we're going to turn over the microphone to Michelle, and she's going to talk about the next steps.
Yeah, so moving on, what do we do to get this official and on the books? We have our next steps. So our consultant team, we didn't really have much discussion, so I don't know that we have any changes to incorporate, but our next step will be an open house, which will be here at the MCL Grand on October 25th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that will be open to the community, the public, and we've invited the technical advisory roundtable folks that participated in the process to come, ask questions. Staff will be available to answer questions related to the draft UDC. And then we are scheduling public hearings for adoption with the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 1st, 2022, and with the City Council on November 7th, 2022, at those regular meetings. So November 1st with the Planning and Zoning Commission at 6:30, and November 7th with the City Council at 7:00 p.m. So those are our next steps, and hopefully then we'll have an ordinance that's adopted, and we're looking at an effective date of December 1st, just to have a clean, clear date so that everyone knows this is when the new ordinance applies. Every application that comes in after December 1st will have to follow these new regulations. Everything that came in prior will continue to work through under the old ordinances.
Michelle, will we have a landing page or something on the website where people can get this document before the 25th?
It is actually on the website already.
Okay, so we have it on the website, and we just need to maybe push that out via Matt and his team, correct?
Yes, and I've coordinated with Matt and his team already to help push that out.
And as a reminder, all 26,000 property owners in the city of Lewisville received a postcard advising of the public hearings, the open house, and it does have a QR code that takes them to the UDC as well.
Super.
But in closing, again, I want to thank our consultants. Thank you so much for doing, for helping us get this far and, and create such a great document, it'll be such a great tool. Also want to, you know, mention and, and a huge, give a huge thanks to all the departments that helped us with this endeavor. Specifically, I want to mention the Fire Department, Parks and Recreation, Neighborhood Services, Building Inspection, Public Services, Economic Development, Engineering, all of them put a lot of time and effort into reviewing this code and giving us feedback. And a very special thanks to our city attorney and, and her staff, they put in literally hundreds of hours looking at these documents, giving us feedback, suggesting, you know, alternatives that would, would pass legal muster. So a huge thank you to, to Liz and her team, they, they were a very vital part of this process, and, and again, I'm very happy that this will become effective on December 1st, it'll really be a, really an early Christmas present, a Christmas present to the city of Lewisville. So with that, I, I'll turn it back over to the mayor, and we can go, move forward with the agenda.
Any other comments?
Just, just one comment, Mr. Mayor. I want to, I want to, for, for the City Council, I want to thank everybody, and I want to shout out our staff that works very well together. They don't work in silos, which is a very uncommon thing, but shouldn't be. They don't work in silos, which is a very uncommon thing, but shouldn't be. So thank you guys for all the work that you've done, and we really do appreciate it. And lastly, for our residents, you know, when people ask, well, why can't the city do this, why can't the city do this? This started in 2019. I haven't been here quite as long as Eric, but I've been here long enough to when this started, and it's been quite a few years, quite a few changes, quite a few things going on. So all these, you know, I forgot some of this stuff until you guys started going through it. So it takes time to get something good, so good governance takes a little bit of time. You know, we're a tugboat, not a speedboat, and we, but we do get it done, and we try to get it right. So I just wanted to shout out to the people who've done all the work and just let the residents know this is finally coming, because I had a lot of people asking about accessory drilling units for the last year and a half, and I've been saying it's coming, it's coming, so now I can say it's here.
Other comments?
Good job.
I appreciate all the work. I wanted to kind of tie a bow on this, because this has been four years, but when you look at this kind of work, this is the legacy type of work. What we do here, what we put in this document will determine how this city develops and how it continues to grow and change, long after those of us who are sitting at this table are gone. So I want to thank everybody for making sure that it's done the right way. In summary, I think what's important for residents to know here is that this gives you more options with your property. It gives you better ways to stay in your home. It gives you more diversity of housing options within the city. Many cities have what's called a missing middle, where there's housing options like duplexes that don't exist anymore, and those may be a housing option where folks want to have multi-generational families or other types of living styles that, you know, we have some of it in Lewisville, but it's usually older before the ordinance has kind of locked it out, and you see that. When we go to places like San Antonio or older neighborhoods or communities and we go, man, this is a great place, this new ordinance creates great places. There's a lot of places you go to that couldn't be built today in modern American zoning, things like the Riverwalk in San Antonio, which I was just at. You couldn't build that today, you know, you just couldn't, not only from a cost perspective, but just from requirements and setbacks and parking and all the other stuff that goes into modern development, which I think encouraged more consumption, more sprawl. Now, we still have the option to live in a single-family home with an acre, a quarter acre, whatever you want, this just gives more opportunities for our homeowners. I think what also is important is that our commercial, and commercial property owners, gives them options. They don't have to sink a lot of sunk cost into old development patterns that don't work for them anymore. Let the market determine how many square feet you need. Let the market determine what you need for parking. You know, let's work with the city to make sure that we meet the aesthetic requirements and the environmental requirements, but let's let the business community work the way it does and get the most value. I'm hopeful that this will encourage some of these parking lots to redevelop into really cool spaces. And of course, I talked a little bit about environmental impacts, but I think at the end of the day, all of this will help us build better places, places where people want to live, places where people will want to get out and meet their neighbors, places where people don't have to get in a car and drive 20 minutes to get to the Walmart that's literally 200 feet from their house. That's a little extreme, but I have seen extreme examples where you've had to, people have lived on one side of a freeway or one side of some sort of barrier, with a car they can get there, but they can't get there pedestrian-wise because it was not thought out. So I'm really excited about what this pretends and what it could provide for all of the folks that invest in our community. So I thank you all for the time and the effort. With that, if there are no other comments, I can go ahead and close tonight's workshop of the Lewisville City Council at 7:14 p.m.
Eric, I'd like to go ahead and say, ask for a motion to adjourn for the P and Z part of this workshop.
Move to adjourn.
Um, if they will say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right. At this point, I will go ahead and open up the regular session of the Lewisville City Council. It is 7:14 p.m., October 10th, and we do have a quorum. Tonight, we have one piece of business to take care of, which is a proclamation, and I'm just going to do it from here, if that's okay. We good? We got a team here that's going to accept this, but tonight's proclamation, whereas in September 2018, the city of Lewisville, Texas was an early adopter of the 10-Minute Walk to a Park Initiative to ensure every resident has equitable access to a quality park, and whereas the 10-Minute Walk to a Park Initiative has been integrated into the Lewisville 2025 and other critical master plans for protecting the green centerpiece, extending the green, and building a connected city, and whereas the city of Lewisville is committed to providing 85% of residents a quality park or open space with a 10-minute walk of where they live by 2025 and 100% by 2035, and therefore, I.T.J. Gilmore, Mayor of Lewisville, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 10th, 2022, is recognized as 10-Minute Walk to a Park Day in the city of Lewisville. We have any comments from staff on this one?
Sure, Mayor, City Council, park fans, park planning fans, just a comment, it's like, a lot of times people think of this as just a park planning initiative, but this is really a community planning initiative, because making a city livable and walkable not only enhances opportunity for play, but it enhances opportunity for community building and people getting to know each other. And kudos to the entire team of the, you know, city departments and city managers and city council and advisory boards who have adopted this and said, this is important for us because it's more than just about parks, though parks are pretty cool.
Thank you, park fan.
Yes, thank you.
Other comments?
I just want to just add to that, that this is just another element, kind of combined with all of these other great tools that is really transforming Lewisville from a great city to an exceptional city, as envisioned by the 2025 plan. So we've got our ducks in a row, and we're heading in the right direction.
Outstanding, thank you. I hope that anybody who's watching this tonight gets to the October 25th. If you have friends or neighbors or business owners that need to see this, make sure you get it out to them. I think it's important to get that last round of feedback before we go ahead and button this all up. With that being said, as there is no additional business for tonight's Lewisville City Council regular session, we are hereby adjourned. And that is 7:17, probably the fastest actual regular session I've ever been in.